Next on the agenda is the public hearing for 4 Beatrix Road. Proposed residential place of assembly. Site plan approval.
Okay, you have me again, Rachel Baris, the engineer for the project, civil tech engineering and surveying PC. The attorney for the project had another meeting, so he was not able to attend tonight's meeting. As you had mentioned previously, we're really looking at this point for you to declare lead agency, so we don't expect to go too far with it either. Just to give an introduction to the project, the application is for a residential place of assembly. The congregation is congregation Torres Higham, and it's 4 Beatrix Road. Much of the addition is going to be for a place of assembly, but portion of it will be for the residence. The residence is to be used by the rabbi of the congregation, but it is a single family that would live there. Residential places of assembly are permitted in the R40 zoning district, which is where this property is located. As I said again, this property allows a residential place of assembly. It is permitted on this lot. The place of assembly must be accessory to a single-family home and cannot exceed forty percent of the gross floor area of the house. We have, the architect has provided the calculations showing the breakdown of square footage for the place of assembly versus the residential component. The proposed use as a place of worship, religious activities are permitted in a residential place of assembly. As I went through before, the forty percent of the gross floor area will be, less than that will be the residential place of assembly. More than forty percent will be for the residence, for the home. The place of assembly will be in the basement and first floor, the round floor of the addition. The first floor will have the Bima and the ark for the Torah. There'll be an entryway and the bathrooms. The lower level has a small, has a recreation social hall, another set of bathrooms, and a warming, it's not a full kitchen, but a warming area for food. There is no onsite cooking. One of the key points of that is that this is for local residents who are of a Orthodox religion where they cannot drive or cook on Shabbos or holidays, so they will not be cooking. The, there was talk in some of the comments about a mikvah as part of the application. The mikvah is a private mikvah, not accessible to anyone outside. There's no exterior doorway. The entranceway is only from inside the residence. There were concerns about sewer or water use from a mikvah. The usage is minimal. Any sewer and water is something that would be evaluated as part of a seeker review. The application expects approximately sixty-six congregants. It's a mix of adults and children. The first service is Friday afternoon evening. It starts at sundown and is approximately one hour. There is a Saturday morning service from nine-thirty till approximately twelve o'clock, and a service Saturday afternoon, early evening, that starts at sundown and lasts approximately ninety minutes. The two parking spaces in the garage will be used for the rabbi, for the residence, which continues as is the current situation. There are two proposed parking spaces in the existing driveway. Full parking. And a new driveway is proposed with sixteen parking spaces and four reserved parking spaces to meet the parking requirements of the proposed project. The applicant is seeking variances. At this time, we are, this will require an environmental review. We are seeking to have the village declare, the planning board declare lead agency. That's it for my introduction. You have any questions?
Rachel, can you address the variances you want? What type? How many?
We are looking for a variance for parking in the front yard and side yard. We are seeking a variance for no buffer, minimum lot area, which is an existing condition, the minimum front setback, which is an existing condition, the minimum front yard due to the parking, the minimum, minimum side yard due to the parking. So the parking gets double because we have to ask for parking in the front yard and for the front yard variance. So even though it's the same thing that triggers it, the same item triggers both, they do come up separately, but it's for one use because there's a parking requirement. We are seeking a variance for the maximum FAR, the floor area ratio, and the number of parking spaces. We find a parking based on the actual anticipated number of spaces that are expected to be utilized. I know everyone is familiar that there may be larger families driving together. There are a lot of people who are walking. This is really a neighborhood congregation for weekends, for Shabbos. And a lot of these people are in walking distance. They're not going to drive if they live two houses away. They're going to be parked in their own driveway and leaving their car there for Shabbos. So I think that goes through the variances that are requested.
What was the total number of variances, Rachel? Seven?
I think eight.
Eight, okay. I just wanted to make sure. I'll double check the narrative. Thank you. I'm trying to admit people while I'm writing down, that's why. Thank you.
Okay.
Rachel, the FAR, is that, does that cover the developmental coverage as well, or are those two separate variances?
Oh, you got, you got me. Our narrative didn't have development coverage. I apologize. That was not intentional. Okay, so FAR is different than development coverage, so yes, I will add another variance. I apologize. So the development coverage is what is impervious on the surface. So that means your building, your sidewalks, your driveway. If you had a big concrete patio out back, if you had a deck, all of those things account towards your development coverage. Which is different than your, your FAR. FAR is your floor area ratio. So that has to do with the living space of the building. So if the more stories you have, if you have a thousand square feet, but you have three stories, that's three thousand square feet that counts towards your floor area ratio. So that's different. So just because your development coverage is one number, they're reflective of different items.
Got you.
Rachel, yes?
Rachel, question. What, I'm looking at the floor plan for the basement, and you had mentioned that the mikvah would be a private mikvah. So I believe it's about seven hundred and thirty-five square feet of the basement is to be residential as opposed to for the congregation? So what areas specifically on this floor plan are we talking about in terms of residential?
Let me see if I can share my screen again.
I'm just going to ask you to do that. Thank you.
Hold on. Did that work?
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this recreation room, this is for use by the congregation. There's restrooms in here, here's utility room. And then this was where we're talking about, there's like a serving station, so it it would just be an area probably as a refrigerator and a cabinet so that they could set up if they had any, any snacks or refreshments. But it's not a full kitchen. It doesn't have a stove or anything of that sort. You can see here, this stairwell, this accesses into the residence, so they have a dressing area for their mikvah. This is just a storage room. There's a sink. Here is your mikvah. There, and there's another bathroom. The mikvah is basically just like a small dipping pool. It is not a large volume. It's not a lap pool.
Yes, you're, you're saying that. I understand what a mikvah is for. But I guess what I'm saying is that mikvah and the dressing area next to it, first of all, it seems rather large for personal use. And also, it could be accessible by the outside. I mean, there's a door that opens into that area and down into this other area here.
That's something that we'll go through with the building inspector, but it has, I've discussed it with the applicant, you discussed it at CERC, and it is intended to be a private mikvah. I can discuss with the architect directly about that, the doors, any connections. I don't know if it is a emergency access door, just to, if they're in the basement for emergency access out, if it's locked and there is no
Well, I, I
I have to confirm with the architect. I'm not, I'm not the architect.
Yeah.
The building inspector is using his hand on my meeting table.
Yeah, I also had a question about that. It's obviously not an egress door because it's opening the wrong way, and it is accessed into the mikvah, which now makes the mikvah not private, but commercial, since you can access it without going through the house.
Right.
Okay, I will confirm that with, and go over with the architect and have them revise that because all intend to refer it to be a private mikvah. A public mikvah, we acknowledge, is not permitted in this use, and we do not intend for this to be a public mikvah.
Can I ask a question? What's the current status of this, of this residence presently?
I confirmed, and it has no violation notices.
Is it currently being used as a, as a worship place?
Most of the, a lot of the letters that I read imply that it is being used. That is not up to my review. Not my involvement, but I am told that there are no violation notices or summonses.
Question is that we had a parade last weekend, so it, it just kind of implies that it is in fact being used. And I was curious if they have a permit, or is it, is it, you know, approved for that use at the current time?
The building inspector would like to say something.
Sure.
Yeah, let me clarify that. They currently do have a violation on the property. It was issued by Corey Martin, November sixteenth. And no, they are not legally approved to be currently a house of worship.
From this November sixteenth?
Uh, yeah. You know what, Rachel, I think I sent it to Moshe and to Ira. I think I forgot you. I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'll forward it to you.
All right. I apologize.
Do I need to read what it's for?
All right, hold on. Were you able to resend it? I, I don't have it. I'm sorry.
I think it was for the condition of the property litter and the furnace.
It is a property maintenance violation. Garbage debris, piles of wood, junk, trash, litter.
Okay. I can look into it, but again, I didn't have any prior knowledge.
Yeah, there were two violations, one on eleven-twelve and one on eleven-sixteen, twenty-twenty.
With all the emails today, almost a hundred of them, I, I missed that one.
I'm happy to look into them with the attorney, and we can address, hopefully they're addressed prior to the next meeting. But I am not in a position to answer anything about them at this time.
Okay.
Are there any other questions? Maybe I can answer other ones.
But I don't think you can, you probably are not in a position really to address the questions I had. I guess that's really
Okay.
But thank you.
Did the consultants get a chance to review it, or?
Yeah, they sent us letters. I emailed them to everyone.
You want to go through those as possible?
Okay.
Maybe Valerie?
You want to go first, Valerie?
Sure, I'll just quickly, I'll summarize my comments. First, oops, sorry. I'll summarize my comments. In, in terms of procedural, I just noted that this project is going to require permits from Rockland County Steward Department, Town of Ramaco Steward Department, and Rockland County Health Department. It does not require the notice to refer to Rockland County as it doesn't fall within the parameters the Rockland County Planning Board referral. And it's categorized as a type-two action under seeker, but it will require, as you know, zoning board of appeals as well as architectural review committee recommendation. A couple of things that I noticed on looking at the various plans. The architectural plans are not consistent with the square footages provided on the site plans or in the narrative. So I think this needs to be rectified next time, that all plans should resemble or should have equal square footages amongst them. The, my biggest two concerns deal with the actual parking. First of all, parking calculations similar to some of the prior applications we've had. I think the building inspector should weigh in as to what is ultimately going to be the required parking. I know Eve put forth her calculations, but clearly they differ than what the applicant is putting forth, so I think it would be best if we can, we can have the building inspector look at that and settle that particular issue. Also, the square footages, again, because they're not consistent on the various plans, that also feeds back into ultimately what is going to be the final parking calculations. Another note is that because of the buffer and the locations and the variances that are required, you know, the landscaping is not as robust as normally you would have in these types of applications. So the concern is the proposed screening to the neighboring properties. And I think the applicant, it might be best if the applicant could provide a little bit more tell or demonstrate that in fact that the screening will be effective to the neighboring properties. Also, in addition, the lighting itself, based on what I saw of the lighting and the proposed lighting plans, I'm not sure if they meet code, especially dealing with section one sixty-four of the code, as well as the requirements under two-ten-eighty-seven. So I think the applicant should also look at those two sections of the code and confirm that their lighting plan actually does indeed meet the regulations for that. So those are our initial comments right now in terms of this, you know, and clearly they need so many variances, and there's quite a number of them that they need as part of this project.
Okay, thanks Valerie.
Thank you.
Eve, do you have anything to add?
Yes, I do. As Valerie noted, regarding the parking count, I do indicate a different calculation, so again, I defer to Lou to double-check and make sure we're on the same page and we're consistent with how we're evaluating parking. So essentially, what I've been doing is I take the square footage of the largest meeting space divided by fifteen square foot per person, come up with the number of seats, and then say one parking stall is needed for three seats. So I believe that's what we've been doing, but Lou, I would ask you to double-check my math. We did talk about the zoning code and the number of variances. I have a concern regarding the structure height. I was not able to confirm that it would be less than thirty feet as was noted on the bulk requirements table. More information is needed, and Lou, I would ask you to weigh in on the height. The, the structure appears to have four full stories, so that should be evaluated. My other concern is down at number five on my letter regards the amount of fill that's being brought to the site. So to level the area to construct the parking lot and to extend the building addition, the site is being filled about fourteen feet, which is rather substantial and rather intrusive to an existing residential neighborhood. So as Valerie mentioned, that should be evaluated, the impacts should be evaluated, neighborhood, and the proposed buffering shall be shown. There was a plan that showed some buffering along the northern property line, but the trees were proposed as seven to eight feet. Unfortunately, the wall toward the east end, which would be the northeast corner and the true east wall, are up to the extent of fourteen feet. So even a six-foot fence or an eight-foot tree would still not effectively shield the headlights of any vehicle that's up there in the parking area. I talk about buffering, I talk about the buffers, little bit about sidewalk and some additional detailing of the plan. I, I did note as well, the lighting plan was provided, but I noted that the light, the plan indicates this light trespassing onto the adjoining properties, and the plan as presented is not acceptable, so the lighting plan has to be reworked. What else? Impact of the construction of the retaining wall, as we mentioned. On item twenty-two, I noticed the plan has an eight-by-eight-feet trash enclosure. This is not typical of a residential use, and if the applicant isn't planning on serving any food, they're only going to have sort of kiddish food like coffee, cakes, and little snacks. Why would an eight-foot-by-eight-foot trash enclosure be needed? And then I just have some details, standard site plan details regarding erosion control and things of that nature, so that's the brief overview of my report.
Okay, thank you. Lou, do you have any other comments?
No, Eve covered a lot of it. I also, I have issues with the parking calculation because you, you could base it on one room, but according to the code, anything that relates to the use for that should be calculated out. The one, there's two ways of doing it, the total square footage of the area, which would include everything, the recreation room, the the mikvah, the serving station system, mikvahs publicly accessible, and the main room, or the number of seats. And based on the size of the room for the number of seats, it's not, it's not working out correctly. I mean, I'm just rerunning the calculations now. And Eve's fairly close with the sixteen-hundred square feet divided by fifteen, which is the state code, state fire code, and coming up with a higher seat count than, than was provided, so that needs to be reviewed. The height of the building, I can't, I, I need more information on that as well because it is almost four full stories to the backside. So I can't even estimate, but I'm guessing it's over the height for the thirty-five feet. I mean, we need a little bit, a little bit more information on a lot of these to answer some questions.
How many total square feet are being proposed to, for just the residential portion?
Total square footage of the house of worship, this was numbers that were given to me from the architect, was three thousand five hundred thirty-eight square feet, and the residential was six thousand four hundred fifty-eight.
Okay, and what's the rationale for adding six thousand square feet to the residential portion?
That's not the addition. That's the total. So it's the existing plus the addition.
Okay, let me rephrase the question. Is there any proposed addition to the existing residential portion of the structure?
There is an, there is an addition that will be used for the residential component.
And what's the rationale for that?
So this, so you can see the architectural is now right on my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so the second floor, the addition that, on the second floor, that's all residential use. So you can see here, there's bedrooms, there's, this is a deck, a study, a sewing room, bathrooms, laundry room. So this is pretty much the line where their house is because this says the existing playroom.
But what's the rationale? What, what's the rationale for such a large residential addition?
I do not know the rabbi, but if I had to make a guess, he has a or from what I've talked with the other congregants, that there is a large family, they're looking to have additional space. And they would like to have an addition to their, to their home as well.
Do, do we know what the current square footage of the residence is presently without the addition?
I can see if it's on the architectural plans.
It's got to be about half that, I'd say.
What's the half?
Sixty.
I don't have the exact square footage offhand.
The new plan calls for sixty-four hundred square feet of residential, so.
I'd be curious what the increase is from what the, what it is present.
Looks like it's almost doubling.
Yeah, that's about my guess, knowing that, those houses.
I mean, looking at it, you know, putting aside the religious use aspect, and just looking at the residential addition. The standards for a variance have to be met using the regular criteria as opposed to the religious use criteria under Arlopa and New York State case law. The concept of a variance is that it runs with the land. It's, you're not supposed to take into account the needs of a particular person or family because that person or family could leave, move, whatever the case may be. So I, I'm, I'm wondering what arguments could be made to the zoning board that would meet the standards for the granting of a variance just for the residential portion. And obviously, you know, we'll have to wait for Ira to make that argument. But it's, it's really two, two sets of standards and goals here. One, a standard, oh, I shouldn't say standard, a large addition to a residence for residential purposes, and the other to accommodate a religious need. And if you were to eliminate or greatly reduce the residential addition, would that in and of itself reduce the size, number, or scope of the variances that you're seeking?
I think that part of that is also that if the residential component is reduced, it doesn't comply with the requirement of the place of assembly being forty percent of the square footage. Certain variances would still apply. If we need parking based on the uses of the house of worship or place of assembly and not based on just the residence, that, the parking is creating a lot, most of these variances. So even if you took out the residential addition, you still would have variances. The two parking spaces for the...
There's still a question about the height, though.
I will go through that with the architect prior to the next meeting.
Definitely help the FAR if you reduce the residential component.
Yeah, I want to just make sure I understand that correctly. Like, in order to meet this forty percent, are we, are we basically expanding the home so that we can still be...
And what, what prevents you from seeking a variance from that forty percent standard?
We can, but you're asking like if it would affect our variances. We're still going, there would still be variances even if you have eliminated that component. It wouldn't clean up the plans that you wouldn't need variances.
I didn't say eliminate all variances. I said, would it reduce the size, scope, and/or number of the variances being sought?
The only one that I could see changing would be the FAR. And then in addition, you would pick up another one of the forty percent.
And maybe the height.
Correct. But I don't know, I have to check with the architect on the height to begin with. It appears that the third floor, what they're calling the third floor, is the existing structure. So I think that it's actually offset. So I don't, I think that it's visually, I'm going to ask her to try to prepare a better rendering of this. But since the third floor plan shows all of these are existing, I think that even if you took away the addition, you wouldn't change your height. So I think that this is all roof, the shaded piece. So it's offset. I will confirm that with the architect, though.
Any other questions from the board?
Not at the present time. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we have a lot of questions, John, but we don't have enough information to go on to ask them properly.
Yeah, I think there's going to be a lot of great views of this right now. Because there's a lot of open questions. I'm going to make a motion to contend in the public hearing for Fort Beatrix Road for proposed residential place of assembly on January twenty-eighth at seven thirty PM via Zoom, unless the restrictions are lifted by the governor.